Welcome to our continued study in the book of Revelation. Today, we're going to be in Revelation chapters four and five. And this is as we begin, it started, let's begin with a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, I thank you for your word. Lord, I pray that we again see you clearly for who we, for who you are. And understanding who you are, we now understand who we are. And Lord, I pray that he gives us strength to follow you no matter where you lead. And no matter when the times get a little scary or uncertain, I pray that you give us strength. We ask it in the name of Jesus, who has risen and reigning even now. We pray in his name, amen. So I asked you to, as just groups today, I asked you to talk about this, this topic of, there's two sides to every coin. And I think we can, we can understand that because that's kind of life. There's, there's different perspectives. Like you have one perspective, somebody else might have another perspective. And the scriptures really give us kind of that, that, that story is that there's different perspectives. So just a couple of examples is, you know, the story of Job, of Job, right? So, so Job is kind of down on earth, right? And then there is this, that's his perspective. So he's thinking, why has all this bad stuff happening to me? Why, why, God, why, why is this happening? Why, why am I losing my home and my family's dying? And I'm losing all my possessions? Why is this happening? And so he has that perspective. But then there's this other perspective where God and Satan are actually talking. And God is saying, okay, you can go after Job, but you just can't kill him. And all of these things are happening. And there's these two different things that are happening. And there's, it's kind of two sides of the same coin. So Job only sees it from this perspective and, but God sees it from this perspective. So that happens all the time. Like another example would be, you know, Jeremiah, there's a perspective that is happening here. And then there's kind of what is happening? What, what's God doing in the midst of all of this? There's a few times in the Bible where people are given a glimpse of the other side of the coin. One of those would be Isaiah chapter six, which we'll talk about today. Another one is Ezekiel chapter one, Ezekiel chapter 10, Daniel chapter seven. Also here in Revelation chapters four and five. Another one would be where you kind of get the, 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 the other side of the coin would be like on the mount of transfiguration. So it doesn't happen very often where you get the other side of the coin. So there is a different perspective that is happening. So here's what I want you to see this morning is I want you to see this perspective. So turn in your bibles to the book of Acts. We're going to be in chapter one here. This is one perspective. This is, this is a, this is the perspective of the disciples. So let's see here, X chapter one verses. All right, so let's take a look here at verse, X chapter one, verse six. So think about this perspective. So when they had come together, they asked him, Lord, will you at this time restore the kingdom to Israel? Jesus said to them, it is not for you to know times or seasons that the father has fixed by his own authority, but you will receive power when the Holy Spirit has come upon you, and you will be my witnesses in Jerusalem, Judea, Samaria, and the, and to the end of the earth. And when he had said these things, as they were looking on, he was lifted up. So he's lifted up. So imagine you're seeing this, you're seeing one part of this perspective. Okay? He was lifted up and a cloud took him out of their sight. And while they were gazing into heaven, as he went, behold, two men stood, stood by them in white robes and said, men of Galilee, why do you stand looking into heaven? This Jesus who has taken up from you into heaven will come in the same way as you saw him go into heaven. So the disciples on the day of ascension, when Jesus ascended, they see him go up. And then the cloud takes him and they don't see any, see him anymore. That's one side of the coin. But what is the other side of the coin? What does the other side of the coin look like? That's what Revelation chapters four and five are going to give to you. Is they're going to give you the other side of the coin. So imagine you're, you're the disciples, you're down on, on earth and you're like, well, where did he just go? And now Revelation chapter four and five is going to give you the image of what that looks like. And, and with Jesus ascended in his glory into heaven. So take a look at Revelation chapter four. Now, what we said last time was that Revelation chapters four and five are like a, they're called an interlude. So you have all of these, these churches that get this letter. And you're kind of going through all of these things and you're seeing what some of the things that they're doing well, and some of the things that they're not doing well. And what we've said multiple times is that the purpose of these letters is to lead God's people to repentance, to, to receive his forgiveness, which essentially prepares them to then see the revelation to, it's kind of like taking the, taking the wax out of yours. Okay, now I can see it's taking the, the scales off your eyes, if you will, that, okay, now I can see Jesus for who he is. So this is what happens in, in, in Revelation chapter four. Says verse one, after this, I looked and behold, a door standing open in heaven. So here's the question I want you to be thinking about this morning, just really quick. I just think this is interesting is where is, where is, is John, where is he at? Well, he is in this place that is called in the, especially in the Old Testament. It's called the divine council. So I'll give you just a couple of, of places where this is, or just one place. If you turn your bibles to, to Psalm eighty-two. Psalm eighty-two, this is verse one. So this is what it says, Psalm eighty-two, verse one. God has taken his place in the divine council. In the midst of the gods, he holds judgment. So he is sitting in this divine council and he is holding judgment. He, he is ruling and reigning, we would say. And so this is what's happening in the divine council. So when you have, like, for example, you have Isaiah. Isaiah is kind of saying, okay, I'm not really sure what's going on. But then he gets a glimpse into the divine council. So there is this disconnect between what is happening on earth and what is happening in the divine council. A couple of reasons why this is important is because Revelation is going to give us a glimpse in the, into the divine council. But I think it's also important because remember when Jesus says, he says this in Luke's gospel. He, Jesus says, I saw Satan fall from heaven like lightning. Remember when Jesus said that? So where did, where did Satan fall from? It's not just fall as a fallen angel, but, but really the way we would understand it is that, is that Satan was a, was a strong angel. Maybe you could even call him an archangel. So where did he, where did he actually fall from? Well, he fell from the divine council. So Satan's name, it literally means, this is why it's important. It literally means like he's the prosecuting attorney. And the prosecuting attorney is the one who is going to the judge and saying, this person is guilty. Well, for you, for us who are in Christ by grace through faith, guess what? Guess, guess, guess who doesn't have a seat in the divine council any longer? Satan doesn't have a, have a, a seat in the divine council anymore. So when the Bible talks about that, that we're, we go to the throne room of God, right? This is where Jesus is interceding for us. Jesus is our, the Holy Spirit is our advocate. And Jesus is there before the father saying, they're not guilty on account of what I, on account of my blood shed for them, that I have redeemed them and I have bought them. But Satan doesn't have a place at all. If anything, God the Father hears Satan, kind of like Charlie Brown's teacher. Remember he, she goes wah, 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 wah. Doesn't even hear it, right? Because Jesus Christ is your advocate. He is the defense attorney, if you will. He is the one who says, on account of my life, death and resurrection, they're not guilty. And, and God has kicked Satan out of the heavenly council or the divine council. Okay, so what we want to do is we want to see this, this, what this divine council looks like, or a representation of what it looks like in chapter four. So, so John is in the heavenly council. This is where he is actually at. Okay, so continuing in verse one. And the first voice, which I had, which I heard speak to me like a trumpet, said, come up here, and I will show you what must take place after this. And at once I was in the spirit, and behold, a throne stood in heaven with one seated on the throne. And he who sat there had the appearance of Jasper and Cornelius. Remember we talked about, this is a connection to the high priest. So not only is the high priest the one who intercedes, but even more so, we're going to see in chapter five, that, that the high priest is also the lamb that lays down his life. Okay? And around there was a rainbow. And again, we think about this as like a halo. So this is representing all of God's authority and rule and reign over all creation. Around the throne were twenty-four elders, twenty-four thrones, and seated on the thrones were twenty-four elders, clothed in white garments with golden crowns on their heads. From the throne came flashes of lightning and rumblings and peals of thunder. And before the throne were burning seven torches of fire, which are the seven spirits of God. And before the throne there was, as it were, a sea of glass like crystal. We're going to come back to this at a later time, but. And around the throne, on each, each side of the throne are four living creatures full of eyes in front and behind. The first living creature like a lion, the second living creature like an ox, and the third living creature with the face of a man. And the fourth living creature like an eagle in flight. And the four living creatures, each of them with six wings are full of eyes all around and within and day and night. They never cease to say, holy, holy, holy is the Lord God Almighty, who was and is and is to come. And whenever the living creatures get, give glory and honor and thanks to him who is seated on the throne, who lives forever and ever, the twenty-four elders fall down before him who is seated on the throne and worship him who lives forever. They cast their crowns before the throne, saying, worthy are you, our Lord and God, to receive glory and honor and power, for you created all things, and by your will they existed and were created. So just as a recap, as a, as kind of a review, we didn't get into this last week, but I wanted to just spend a little time to think about, people ask me all the time, and they're, they're really interested in, in angels. And so we kind of want to see what these angels are. So we, we see that they have, there's four of them, they have different faces. They're going to come up again in, in chapter six, again and again. We're going to see them all over through, throughout Revelation. But, but, but these angels or these heavenly beings, they really represent the God's care and reign and, and service into all creation. We talked about the fact that there's lots of people who think, well, these four creatures, they must represent, symbolize the, the, the four gospels. I don't know about that, but you can, you, that's fair. But there's no agreement on which ones they are. But there is agreement that there is a connection back to Isaiah chapter six. So turn your bibles really quick to Isaiah chapter six, because we want to see how Isaiah chapter six addresses this. Because here's Isaiah, and he gets to see into this heavenly council. So this is what, this is what it says, Isaiah chapter six, verse one. Similar vision to that of Revelation chapters four and five. Verse one, in the year that King Uzziah died, I saw the Lord sitting on the throne, high and lifted up. And the train of his rope filled the temple. Above him stood the seraphim, which are, which would be like fire angels. That's a seraphim would be, would be connected to fire. Each had six wings, so here's six wings again. With two he covered his face, with two he covered his feet, and with two he flew. And one called to another and said, holy, holy, holy is the Lord of hosts, that is, the Lord of armies. The whole earth is full of his glory. And the foundations of the threshold shook at the voice of him who called, and the house was filled with smoke. And I said, woe to me, just like John, for I am lost, and for I am a man of unclean lips, and I dwell in the midst of people of unclean lips, for my eyes have seen the king, the Lord of hosts. Then one of the seraphim flew to me, having his hand a burning coal that he had taken with tongs from the altar. And he touched my mouth and said, behold, this has touched your lips, your guilt is taken away, and your sin is atoned for. So really don't, not as much detail as we get in Revelation chapters four and five in terms of what they look like. So turn in your bibles to Ezekiel chapter one. And now we're going to see that there's some great similarities to what, what Ezekiel sees, and also what John sees in Revelation chapter four. So Ezekiel chapter one, verse four. Says, as I looked, behold, a stormy wind came out of the north and a great cloud and brightness around it, and fire flashing forth continually, and in the midst of the fire, as it were, gleaming metal. And from the midst of it came likeness of four living creatures. So these are going to be same, same living creatures that we're going to see in, in Revelation chapter four. And this was their, this was their appearance. They had a human likeness, but each had four faces, and each of them had four wings. Now this one has four wings, but Revelation has six wings. Well, why is that? Well, in Isaiah chapter six, they had six wings that flew and six wings, they, they covered their, their face. And, and then two wings covered, covered their feet. Well, these angels are actually flying. So, so one commentator would say, you know, like if you look at a, at a hummingbird, you can't see the wings, right? So you can see the two wings that aren't moving, but the other two wings where they're flying, you can't really see them. So that's kind of the idea here. So, but each had four faces, this is verse six. And each of them had four wings. Their legs were straight, and the soles of their feet were like the, the soles of calf's hoof, calf's foot. And they sparkled like burnished bronze, that we see that in Revelation too. Under their wings, on their four sides, they had human hands. And the four had their faces and their wings thus. Their wings touched one another. Each one of them went straight forward without turning as they went. As for the likeness of their faces, each had a human face. The four had the face of a lion on the right side. The four had the face of an ox on the left side. And the four had the face of an eagle. Such were their faces, and their wings were spread out above. Each creature had two wings, each of which touched the wing of another, while two covered their bodies. And so now we're going to jump down to verse fifteen of Ezekiel chapter one. Says, now, as I looked at the living creatures, I saw a wheel on the earth beside the living creatures, one of each of the four of them. As for the appearance of the wheels and their construction, their appearance was like the gleaming of barrel. And the four had the same likeness, their appearance and construction being, as it were, a wheel within a wheel. So there's a lot of debate on what this all means. It's also, we see the same, very similar vision in Daniel chapter seven. But, but really what's happening here is this, is these angels are serving the Lord. And they are also, this, this idea of they're encompassing all of creation. One more place that I just want you to see here that I think is really helpful as we, as we just think about what is happening in, in Revelation chapter four and five. So in, in second chronicles, chapter sixteen, this is verse nine. You can turn your bibles there if you want to, but second, second, I'm sorry, second chronicles, chapter sixteen, verse nine. Thinking about the eyes of the Lord. So what are these, these creatures that have all of these eyes? Verse nine says, for the eyes of the Lord run to and fro throughout the whole earth to give strong support to those whose heart is blameless toward him. You have done foolishly in this, for from now on you, you will have wars. Then Asa was angry with the seer. The, the point here is, is that the eyes of the Lord are constantly seeking and serving the people that call upon him to bring them in relationship and salvation in the personal work of Jesus Christ. All right, so turn back into your bibles to Revelation chapter five. So just wanted you to kind of see a few other things in Revelation chapter four. But now we want to get into Revelation chapter five. Same image, same place. Now there's going to be a different scene that kind of takes place that John is looking at. So this is not when you go from chapter four to chapter five. It's the same vision. It's not, it's not a different vision. It's just all of this is kind of being, is playing out in front of him. Okay, so Revelation chapter five, verse one. Then I saw in the right hand of him, who was seated on the throne. So this would be God the Father. So on the right hand is him seated on the throne, a scroll written within it, or written within, and on the back sealed with seven seals. So we'll get to this probably next week. But if you remember at the beginning of Revelation, the entire book of Revelation is not, it's not linear. It's, it's cyclical. So what happens is the, is the, the, the end of the world from, from basically from Christ's ascension up to the end, happens three times in the, in Revelation. So one is through seven seals. So we're about to see these seven seals opened up, which is one cycle. The next cycle is going to be seven trumpets. And then the next one is going to be seven bowls, all with the number seven. So it's going to be, it's like looking at Christ's ascension, ascension all the way up to the end. It's like looking at it three different times, but just in three different ways. But it's the same story. Okay? So the seven seals, what are those? Well, so picture this, God the Father, there's, there's this scroll, it's got seven seals on it. And what those seven seals represent is really all of God's plan for salvation, for people from Christ's ascension up to the end. So it's his entire plan for all people. Okay? So there's these seven seals, verse two. And I saw a strong angel proclaiming with a loud voice, who is worthy to open the scroll and break its seals? And no one in heaven, or on earth, or under the earth was able to open the scroll or look into it. Now, there's sometimes been a lot of debate about this in terms of no one in heaven, or on earth, or under the earth. What does that mean? It's basically the Bible's way of saying, no one in all of creation is able to open, is worthy to open these seals and reveal God's plan from Christ's ascension up to the end. So again, verse three, and no one in heaven, or on earth, or under the earth was able to open the scroll or look into it. Verse four, and I began, that's John, and I began to weep loudly, because no one was found worthy to open the scroll or to look into it. So I find this very interesting because what happens as a, as a precursor? So what's going to happen in chapter six and following is each one of these seals is going to just pop one, one after the other. And the first four seals, what's going to happen is the four horsemen of the apocalypse are going to, one, you open one seal. And then in chapter six, you're going to have the rider with a bow on it. Then you're going to have another, you're going to pop another seal, and then you're going to have another horse come out. And every single time these horses come out, every single time these, these seals are broken, bad things happen. Like, like really bad things happen. So when John says in verse four of chapter five, and I began to weep loudly, because no one was found worthy. I don't know about you, but there's going to be a time where it's in chapter six and seven and eight. And I'm going to be thinking, why would you weep that you can't, that the, there's a part of me that would say, just leave them closed. Don't pop the seals, right? But the point is, is that what we see in, in chapters four and five is that we do want, and our hope, and, and those that are the saints that have gone, people have gone before us, their will, their desire is lined up with the father's desire. And that is to bring about the end, to bring about salvation, to reach people, and to bring them into relationship with Jesus Christ. So there is this kind of sense of, we want the end to come. And, and yet, when we see these, these seals pop, it's like, stop popping the seals, right? Because it gets even, it gets worse and worse and worse. And so we'll see what that, what that looks like. Okay, so verse four, back in chapter, Revelation chapter five, verse four. And I began to weep loudly, because no one was found worthy to open the scroll or to look into it. And one of the elders said to me, weep no more. Behold, the lion of the tribe of Judah, the root of David, has conquered, so that he can open the scroll and its seven seals. Verse six, and between the throne and the four living creatures, and among the elders, I saw a lamb standing as though it had been slain, with seven horns and with seven eyes, which are the seven spirits of God, sent out into all the earth. Last, last time we were together, I asked you to just think about, what's your picture of Jesus? What do you think about him? I would say that, that beyond the mount of transfiguration, beyond any image that you see in the gospels, this image of Jesus Christ in all of his ascended glory is, is the best picture of Jesus in the whole Bible. This, this chapter five is, is just amazing. All right, let's keep going. So you see, so, so again, I want you to get the picture in your mind. So God the Father's holding this scroll, there's seven seals on it, nobody can open it. Nobody can, can, can bring about God's, God's full plan. And people are weeping, saying, oh, what are we going to do? And then up steps, up steps Jesus Christ as the lamb who was slain. And that's what we see. And, and we're going to see the, the whole company of heaven is, is going to, going to shout for joy. Okay? So the lamb standing had been slain with the seven horns. Again, this is, the seven is the number of Jesus, it's, it's his number. Okay? Verse seven, and he went and took the scroll from the right hand, that is, the, the right hand of authority. So, so think about it as God the Father is handing off authority to Jesus Christ, his son. Okay? And when he had, this is verse, verse seven, and when he took the scroll from the right hand of him who was seated on the throne. And when he had taken the scroll, the four living creatures and the twenty-four elders fell down before the lamb, each holding a harp and golden bowls full of incense, which are the prayers of the saints. We're going to see this come up again in Revelation chapter sixteen, because you kind of wonder, people always ask, you know, who are, for people who have departed in faith and are absent the body, but present with the Lord in this place called paradise and heaven with him, like, what are they doing? Well, we're going to see here in Revelation five and in Revelation sixteen as well. What are they doing? They're praying. They're praying, they, they, they know that there is suffering, that there is difficulty, and they're praying, oh, Lord, please, please, please bring about your plan, fulfill your promises, rescue those who are in Christ, and, and bring people into relationship with you, Lord Jesus. They're, they're praying fervently for you and for me. And, and so again, we're going to see this over, over and over again. Okay, and verse nine, and they sang a new song, saying, worthy are you to take the scroll and to open its seals? For you were slain, and by your blood you ransomed people for God, from every tribe and language and people and nation. And you have made them a kingdom and priests to our God, and they shall reign on the earth. We're going to unpack what that means, but I want to, we're going to pack what that means next week. But I want to point you to this, this image, one of the most glorious images in all of the Bible in, in Revelation chapter seven. This is verse nine, where they just, the, the, the whole. where they just, the whole company of heaven are just worshiping, and they are singing praises and glory to the Lamb who was slain. So as we close, I just want you to, want you to start thinking about, or just want to ask the question, when is this happening? So we started off by saying, there's two sides to every coin. So there are some who would say, Revelation chapters four and five, that is something that is happening in the future. Like, that's not happening right now. That is a future, this is something that is not yet happened. What I'm going to encourage you to think about is that this is a picture of, think about the ascension, and Jesus gets to the other side of the clouds, and the disciples are sitting there saying, you know, what happened, right? This is the picture that we're given that's happening now. So when we get to Revelation, chapter 20, I'm going to encourage you to think about the fact that the Lord Jesus Christ is not reigning then, he's reigning now. Revelation four and five is giving us this picture of God the Father, through the Son, and the power of the Holy Spirit, who has authority and is reigning over all creation to do one thing and one thing only, and that is to reach people and bring them in the relationship through Jesus Christ by the power of his Holy Spirit, to save them, so that they would be counted among the company of heaven. That's what he's doing right now. So there's this challenge that we have, is we kind of look at what's happening in our world. And I look at what's happening in the Middle East. I look at what's happening in Russia, and Ukraine, and other places in our world. Just like Job, we're kind of down here saying, what in the world is going on? And what happens is Revelation is giving us the other side of the coin. Because if we're here, if we're on this side, could we be honest and simply say that we probably look at what's happening in our world and say, "Lord, if you're reigning, you're not doing a really good job of it?" Revelation gives us the other side of the coin. It gives us that other perspective to see that God is reigning graciously. He is reigning victoriously. And what he's doing is he's working all these things out through his angels, through all of the company of heaven, through the heavenly hosts, to bring people into relationship through the person and work of Jesus Christ. That is the image, and that is what we're going to see. And his point is, all of these things that are happening in the world and on the earth hold on in the midst of it all, because his plan is sure. So next week, we're going to get more to talk about, what does this mean when it says, "And you have made them a kingdom of priests to our God, and they shall reign on the earth." What does that mean? Are we, does that mean we will reign on the earth? Does it mean that we are reigning on the earth? Come back next week, and we'll talk more about that in the Revelation. So let's pray. Heavenly Father, I thank you for your word. I thank you for a picture, a wonderful picture of the Lord Jesus Christ. We pray, Father, that it would strengthen us, that we would just be in total awe of who you are, and the lengths that you have gone to rescue sinners like us. Lord, may we have great hope and peace. We pray it in the name of Jesus. Amen. God bless you, and we'll see you next week.